All right. Okeemaw, I'm gonna call the City Council Meeting for the City of Lake Elmo Tuesday, October 21st order. If you'll please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice as one. All right. First order of business is approval of the agenda as it's before you. I'll entertain a motion for approval of said agenda unless you have something to add or move.
Move to approve the agenda?
Second. I have a motion in the second to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Do we have anybody with public comments or inquiries tonight?
Not to the agenda item.
Okay, perfect. So we have the minutes from 9:00 to 25:00 in the packet. I'll entertain a motion unless there's some issues with the agenda or the meeting minutes from 9:00 to 25:00.
Motion to approve the minutes is written.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to approve the minutes from 9:00 to 25:00. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are hereby approved. Consent agenda items are approved payments and dispersments, approved 2026 LM- CIT statutory tort limits, approved Inwood Townhomes first edition development agreement, approved Savona fourth edition security release, approved pay request number four for the 2025 Street and Utility project, approved pay request number one for the I-94 lift station enforcement improvements, approved pay request number one for the Reed Park parking lot improvements, approved pay request number two for the Stillwater School District utility improvements, approved pay request number four, final one for well number two PFAS removal equipment, approved pay request number two for the Village Parkway UP railroad crossing improvements, approve the 2026 benefit renewal, approve implementation plan for Minnesota paid leave. And that's what we've got. If I can get a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to approve consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Moving into our regular agenda, we have the 2026 Street and Utility Public Improvement Hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight I have before you an item to order, the improvement for the 2026 Street and Utility So you've seen this before, a lot of disinformation, but I'm going to kind of recap the findings of the feasibility reports and the recommendations moving forward. So we'll go over a handful of items tonight. So the 2026 Street Improvement Project is proposed for the Lake Elmo Heights neighborhood with it getting into the Eagle Creek Point Estates neighborhood as well. This is, we'll just say this area is adjacent to that segment of Inwood Avenue that was just rehabilitated by Washington County this year. So last month, Council accepted the feasibility report and ordered the public improvement hearing tonight. Pending the results of the hearing, we'll move into, or pending results of Council action, we'll move into final design of the project. So to recap, findings of the feasibility study, the Geotech Report indicates that area roadways can be improved with reclamation. This strategy has been used quite a bit in Lake Elmo, and the reconstruction of the streets in the neighborhood, in these neighborhoods, will match the existing street widths generally profile and geometrics. And the streets should also be reconstructed with concrete curb and gutter, specifically B-418 style curb and gutter, to maximize the lifecycle of the streets. Per Public Works policy, no parking restrictions will be proposed around cul-de-sac ends. We're not proposing any other, no parking restrictions as all the streets have adequate width. We'll be looking into the drainage systems in the area and recommending replacements of storm sewer structures or other drainage systems as necessary. The neighborhoods are already served by existing public water main. That water main was put in approximately 20 years ago. No improvements are recommended to the system at this time. We will work with Public Works to do a thorough inspection of valves, hydrants, things like that in case we do need to make kind of a one-off repair. And the streets, this area is outside of the MUSA boundary, and we're not proposing to extend any sort of sanitary sewer into the area at this time. So again, it's just a graphic showing the proposed improvement areas. We've got, Lake Elmo Heights is bounded by Stillwater Boulevard and Inwood Avenue there, one cul-de-sac off of Stillwater up on the north end. And then Eagle Creek Point Estates neighborhood is actually, the cul-de-sac is Inwood Avenue. Again, to touch on those parking restrictions I mentioned, we're just proposing those around The preliminary, the feasibility report did do a calculation of preliminary project estimate here. Per city policy, 30% of the project costs are eligible for assessment. Those costs have been tabulated, as shown on the slide here. So, you know, for Lake Elmo Heights, generally you've got about a $15,000 assessment for per lots. The Lake Elmo Heights cul-de-sac, it actually has a number of smaller lots on the street, so their assessments will lower at $6,800. And then Eagle Creek Point Estates, again, sort of like the Lake Elmo Heights neighborhood is larger lots, and their assessment is proposed at just under $16,000 at the moment. These are the properties proposed to be assessed as part of that project cost. And so tonight, we'll be holding a public hearing per the state statute 429 process. Following that hearing, I'm seeking Council action to approve a resolution ordering the improvement for the 2026 Street and Utility Improvements, the preparation of final plans and specifications, per the feasibility report, and also authorizing the city administrator to enter into a contract with Bolton Mink for final design and bidding phase services not to exceed $138,600. With that, if there are any questions, I'll stand for those now, otherwise I'll stand aside for the public hearing.
Any questions for City Engineer?
Just one real quick. So just looking at the last part, the $138,000, I'm just trying to compare that to last year's amount, and I think last year it might have been a little bit different how it was segmented up and maybe into a few different parts.
So, yep, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, looking at it, it looks like it was closer to about a, just under $100,000 that we were looking at for that contract. Is there additional work? Is that just the increase in prices, or is there additional factors different than what it was last year with maybe the kind of different contract?
Excellent question. Yep, so we have a comparable project. Obviously, pricing does go up year to year. This, I just want to stress that this is a not to exceed.
Sure.
And this does include both staff time and, you know, and the projects team time. So last year, those two numbers were separated, if you may recall.
Yep.
So this is a combination of those numbers. I worked with Bolton Mink as a consultant to the city, and this is a not to exceed based on an estimated soft cost in the feasibility report.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
If not, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of opening the public hearing for improvements for the 2026 Street and Utility Improvements, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Open hearing is now at 7:10. If anybody would like to speak on the public hearing, you can do so now. All right, I'll entertain. Oh, got one? All right. Please state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name is Jim Greenard. I live at 2677 Imperial Avenue. And I guess one question I have a concern is when do we plan on, what's the long-range plan for sewer development in that proposed area? Because if you're gonna put in a new street and two years later you're gonna put in a sewer, there isn't much sense to do it.
At this time, we have no plans of putting sewer in that area. It's not within the Metropolitan Utility Service area, so it's still maintained through your current septic systems.
Another question I have is what is the cost-benefit analysis of concrete curb versus asphalt?
Well, as a standard, we use concrete curb because we have used bituminous curb in the past, and it doesn't last very long. It doesn't, as well as concrete curb and gutter, and the snowplows tend to chew up the bituminous curb and gutter.
So it will last over and above what asphalt curb was so that we could-
Oh, yes.
-a cost-benefit?
Absolutely. We did not do a cost-benefit analysis, no. We did not perform a cost-benefit analysis.
You don't need to?
No, it's the standard to put in the concrete curb and gutter.
Oh, is there, is that a law?
It's in, it's in our standard plates for the engineering for the City of Lake Elmo.
Okay.
It's not law.
Good evening, Council. Steve Meyer, 8301 27th Street North. Question for Engineer, Mr. Stanley. In terms of the complete removal versus a mill and overlay, do you have any comments about choosing one versus the other? I would assume that the mill and overlay was much more economical than a full replacement?
I'll, I'll answer that right now, if Council's okay.
Please.
Yep. So what I didn't get into in our presentation tonight was some of the things that have been shared at, you know, some of the open houses and things like that. These streets are actually not eligible for a mill and, they're not good candidates for a mill and overlay treatment. The deterioration of the asphalt is such that any sort of mill and overlay will just throw the, totally tear the streets apart. Once they've kind of cracked full depth like they have, full-depth asphalt failure, the, they have to be either reclaimed or torn out and completely reconstructed. And so the reclamation approach, what we do is we grind the existing asphalt and mix it with the underlying existing aggregate base and reuse that as the aggregate base. But these streets are too far gone to be milled and overlaid.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Support.
We have a motion in the second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public hearing's closed. Entertain a motion for discussion.
Motion to approve resolution number 2025-070, ordering the improvements for the 2026 Street and Utility Improvements in preparation of plans and specifications for the recommended improvements outlined in the feasibility report, dated September 9th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, discussion. Aye. Yeah?
Oh, yeah.
Councilmember holds.
I was gonna say thank you to Jim and Steve for coming to the hearing first and asking your questions. I hope the concerns were addressed, but thank you for coming and doing that. With public hearing at this stage, usually we don't often, so thank you for coming and doing that. I don't have any specific concerns. I thank you, Nate, for the report and knowing those streets, I think this is a very reasonable use of expenditures.
I'll just add that again, yeah, these roads, obviously, they need it. And I think it was a great question with the, the concrete curb. I think this kind of comes up in the next agenda item here as well, potentially with where maybe we've seen some of those issues. I know it's been, kind of been brought up at every single time we go through this process, and that's definitely been something that we've looked at and really have, you know, done the research on. Yeah, I don't think the cost analysis was, cost benefit was done on this one, but I think that has been done previously to make that policy decision is kind of why that's in our policy for our pavement management plans, so, yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of resolution 2026-070, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Entertain a motion on the authorizing city administrator.
Motion to authorize the city administrator to enter into a contract with Bolton Mink Inc. for the final design bidding phase services in the not to exceed amount of $138,600 for the 2026 Street and Utility Improvements.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, need discussion. Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Authorization passes. Okay, item number two, I guess you get to stay up there, Mr. Stanley. Public hearing, adopt final assessment role for the 2025 Street and Utility Improvements.
Sorry, I need a little technical assistance here. I'm not that kind of engineer, you know. All righty. Sorry for the brief interruption. Mayor and Council, before you is an item to adopt the final assessment role for the 2025 Street and Utility Improvements. So I'm gonna recap, kind of a summary of the improvements, go over the locations again, and then talk about the final assessments, which actually went down for folks here. So the 2025 project was spread across a handful of neighborhoods in the northwest part of town. There's Irish Court, Teal Pass Estates, Lake Elmo Vista, Prairie Hamlet, Rolling Hills Estates, and Jewith Mary Manor. This, generally, a lot of these streets were, you know, subdivisions that had no maintenance until, except for maybe some light duty surface treatments like, you know, chip seals and just patching. So full-depth reclamation of the streets was completed, along with installation of new concrete curb and gutter, the B-418 style that we've seen a lot of success with. Storm sewer repairs, including the installation of drain tile and drainage improvements, were completed. And there was no extension of new public water or sanitary sewage lines with this project. If you, if Council recalls, it was considered as there were some neighborhoods that were eligible, but the assessments were simply too high for folks. So looking at the final assessment tabulation, Irish Court initially was estimated at $10,700 for those folks on that cul-de-sac. Their final assessment is $8,300. Teal Pass Estates, a bit higher, $17,500, their assessment's down to $13,500. This would be the 55th, 57th Julep Ways that Rolling Hills Estates, Lake Elmo Vista, Mary Jewith Manor neighborhood, their initial preliminary assessments were estimated $14,200, and they're down to $11,000. One correction to this neighborhood, before I continue, I just want to make Council aware, there was a property that was identified in the preliminary assessment role that had no work done in front of their property. There was, there was some confusion between an old project and the current feasibility report when it was being developed, that it was listed as a property that was gonna benefit from the project. It was a flagged lot with just a little bit of frontage at the intersection of 57th and 55th Streets in North, and that intersection was not included in the scope of improvements in this, in this project. So that, that property has been removed from the assessment role. That said, we did, we did not choose to recalculate any of the final assessments, so those will remain at $11,000 for the remaining 15 properties. And I'll, I'll be happy to entertain any questions on that matter here, too. So moving on, the Lake Elmo Vista neighborhood, the assessments are down from 22, a little over 22,000 to a little over 17. There is a half, half unit there, that is a property that just had, their primary access is off of a different roadway, but they chose to maintain a driveway off of, a secondary driveway off of 55th Street North. And then Prairie Hamlet, those are down from 7750 to $6,000. Overall, the assessments were reduced by a little over $22,000, or 22% for everybody, and that was applied equally across the board for all neighborhoods, as there were no significant change orders or big changes in any of the areas. So again, just recap, this was Irish Court, this is a little tighter view of our areas. This was Teal Pass Estates. So the property that was, this is the 55th, 57th Julep area. That property that was excluded, that was originally included, was that lot on the far west end of the neighborhood, 9696 55th Street North. You can see that's a relatively large flagged lot. That intersection was improved at a different time, and the improvements actually did not extend, pardon me, into the intersection with this project, so that was a, that was an error. This is 55th Street North, Lake Elmo Vista. Again, the blue property or the bluish color, that's the one with the secondary access, that's seeing a 50% assessment. And then this is the Prairie Hamlet neighborhood. So again, Council will be opening for a public hearing. After that hearing, I, I'm asking Council, I'm slightly modifying my request of action, I'll be asking Council to approve the resolution adopting the final assessment role as modified, removing 9696 55th Street North from the role. With that, questions?
Could you go back to that 9696 parcel? I'm trying to understand. So it doesn't front on any street, so would it ever be assessed?
It should have been, so, excellent question, Councilmember Dragusin. Actually, it comes out right in the intersection, like it's another leg of it, is where the driveway comes out. In the 2017 Street Utility Improvements, 55th Street North was included, and those improvements extended through the intersection, just to the end of radius on 55th Street and 57th Street. That property should have been included with those improvements to be assessed, and they were not. Looking at, I spoke with the property owner today, and also with other engineering staff and the city attorney, and it was our opinion that we, there's not a way to retroactively assess-
I agree.
...for that project. And so that's, that's an error on, on focus from, you know, 2017's, you know, project, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for City Engineer? Hearing any, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
All right, all those in favor of opening the public hearing for resolution of the 2025 Street and Utility Project, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Open hearing for the project. So we have somebody that would like to speak. When you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. I have Catherine Todd.
Good evening, I'm Catherine Todd. I live at 9961 55th Street North, and I want to thank you for allowing me to speak this evening, Mayor Caden, head, members of the City Council, city staff, and my fellow residents. I'm here to talk about the $17,200 assessment, plus five and a half percent interest over 15 years for Street Utility Improvements. That will not only severely financially burden me, but also are fundamentally unjust, I believe, given what I've already contributed to Lake Elmo. When I purchased my property in 2019 for $435,000, I believed I was investing in a fair, thriving community. Since then, I've paid roughly $35,000 in city-related costs, taxes and fees and prior assessments, with minimal return or infrastructure. In less than six years, the city has doubled my taxable value of my home without my making appreciable, meaningful improvements to my property. The city has appropriated roughly 25% of my land as watershed that I still pay taxes on and I still purchase, installing a new drainage that empties lawn and pesticide runoff downhill from all of my neighbors, and street oils and contaminants directly onto my property adjacent to my well. This increases both maintenance demands and chemical exposure risks to myself and my family. In 2019, ironically, the city required me to relocate my entire septic field at a personal cost of over $30,000 right after I moved in, claiming that it was less than a foot, I think it was six inches to be exact, too close to that very watershed. Ironically, this new street project increased the water runoff into that same area, the very land that I was told I needed to protect. During construction of the new street this summer, four of my mature trees were cut down for convenience to the contractors. My in-ground sprinkler system was pulled up, as was my electronic dog fence along my entire property line. Repairs for improving those as soon as the project's finished is estimated by those contractors at over $3,600. Despite my paying $800 for an official survey before this project began to define my legal easement rights, the city denies all liability for these damages. Altogether, I've spent over $72,000 towards city-related requirements and impacts before the $17,200 assessment is even added to the total. Unlike most property owners paying similar taxes, I receive no city water, no utilities, no sewer services. I rely on my own private well, my own purification system, my own septic system, that I maintain entirely at my own expense. Meanwhile, the groundwater serving my well lies within the 3M chemical contamination zone, something the city has known about and receives settlement funds to address. Yet no mitigation or support has been provided to protect my water. So I must ask, why am I being taxed and assessed as though I receive full municipal services when I do not? Across the Twin Cities, residents who pay comparable property taxes to mine typically enjoy city water, city sewer, managed storm systems, street lighting, regular maintenance, and stable public utility infrastructure. In contrast, my property in Lake Elmo receives none of these core services. Yet I'm being charged a high personal tax burden on increasing value of my home that I cannot control. And thousands more for street projects that reduce my usable land, increase runoff to my property, and dam- increase runoff to my property, and damage my property respectively. The imbalances between what I pay and what I receive is significant and indefensible under the fair assessment standard, in my opinion. City assessments are meant, as you know better than anyone, to reflect the benefit received by property owners. In my case, the benefit is negligible and the harm is measurable. The city drainage project directly pollutes runoff onto my land. This improvement decreases my property's environmental safety. And I'm being asked to finance it through an interest-bearing assessment over the next fifteen years. Six years ago, when the city forced me to pay thirty thousand dollars to protect the water quality that today the city is now undermining with this project and expecting me to pay again is not equity, it feels like exploitation. As someone who works for a cancer nonprofit and a widow who lost her husband just after she moved to Lake Elmo, the idea that my own well could now further be compromised by this project feels deeply distressing. And to be forced to pay for that risk with interest alone feels profoundly unjust. I ask the council to respectfully consider abating or reducing my seventeen thousand, two hundred assessment or eliminating the interest in the, in the understanding that my property is the entire neighborhood's watershed, offset damages perhaps to the trees, the sprinklers, the fencing, and lost land that I still pay taxes on, reduce my property taxes by the twenty-five percent that is now functional watershed, provide an exemption or a partial waiver, delay any collection, or commit to environmental testing and remediation to ensure that my well is not now at increased risk. Additionally, I propose that a forensic accounting assessment by a third party be considered to determine where settlement money and tax monies are being used in equity and ethical usage for all residents of Lake Elmo. In closing, I ask the council to see me not as a revenue, but as a resident, a resident who believes in this community and who has paid more than her fair share. I am not asking for special treatment or avoidance of civil responsibility, only that my contributions be met with fairness, proportionality, and respect for the principle that assessment should benefit, reflect actual benefit, not a blanket policy. Please consider this assessment carefully, it has profound impact on me. Choose to uphold the trust and the fairness and the integrity that make Lake Elmo the kind of community that we all want to live in. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Todd. We did receive an email from a Mr., John Bourbon, requesting something, uh, reducing their assessment hearing due to being assessed for some work that was done back in, was it two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eleven? I want to say, based on roadway design. And I believe all the, um, city council members have received that. Yeah. As it was approved in two thousand and ten street improvement plan. It's a lengthy letter, and I don't plan on reading it in front of everybody at this point in time unless somebody requests me to. For that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, support.
We have a motion and second to close the public hearing at this time. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed, seven thirty-five. Question for Mr. Stanley. Are you aware of said trees that needed to be removed? Were those in the public right-of-way? At Ms. Todd's residence? Were they within the boulevard?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I, I'm not aware of the specific tree she speaks of, but they would have either had to have been in the right-of-way or some sort of utility easement.
Would have been the same for?
I don't know how to handle that one. If you can show Mr. Stanley on a map.
The trees, you can see my property is nine-nine-six-one. You see the trees that are right there on my property? They were within the easement. What I was told was the contractor wants to be able to use his backhoe or loader easily in that area, and it would be inconvenient. One of the people who maintains that area and did our clean-out last year of that drainage said that they didn't believe that it was going to be in the way, and they believed the trees could stay. I asked the supervisor to come on property, asked them to do whatever they could to help me save the trees that were clearly within my property line. And he said, no, take the trees down. It's inconvenient if the contractors spend more time trying to maneuver around that tree. There are the cluster of trees. It could cost the city more money for them to have to take the time to do that. So they took the trees down. Trees are valuable, between one thousand and ten thousand dollars for mature trees. And I believed it was worth consideration, and I did my best to try to campaign for that. They were not in the roadway or on easement in any way, shape, or form. The dog fence goes along the entire property line, and that entire thing has to be taken out, same with the underground sprinkler system.
Right.
The dog fence was within my easement.
Those are in the right-of-way then?
Yeah, okay.
The dog fence wasn't.
Wasn't?
It was not. The dog, the dog fence wasn't for convenience for the curb. They took out twice as much area as they needed to. They said it was just way faster and way easier to do that. I said, if you do that, you're going to end up costing me a lot of money because I put it outside of the easement. They took out all the land on the actual, past the actual easements. And I do, I did take photos if, along the process of the way.
So to respond to the mayor's question, I, I'm, this is not an issue I'm specifically familiar with. I apologize for any inconvenience, obviously. We certainly, as, as a team, we, we aim to try to avoid any sort of tree impacts, knowing that, you know, it's not just the value, it's the fact that a mature tree doesn't, it takes a long time to come along, you know? So we, we do what we can to work around those. So I'm sorry, I'm sorry to hear, I, I certainly, I can follow up on this and see if there's any other explanation I can.
Yes, please do.
Yeah, I guess like, yeah, what would be the normal course of action if, if they do have to dig up an irrigation system or they do have to dig up an invisible fence or, you know, go into the property? What is typically, how is that handled then as a result? Obviously, it's different if it's in the right-of-way or an easement.
So the contractor is not, we don't allow the contractor to go beyond the right-of-way. So I, I don't know if there's some misunderstanding, but, and, and a lot of folks have set items in the right-of-way. So we, we send out general letters, notices about these items, talk about them at public meetings. And we, we encourage folks to work with, you know, some, some folks have a contractor, an irrigation contractor that they use all the time, or, or contact one to, um, you know, remove those, those pieces that are going to be in the danger zone. Might not be the entire right-of-way, but just where we know, you know, we can say confidently, we think we're going to, the contractor's going to be here, let's add like four or five feet to that as a factor of safety, because in some spots, the right-of-way is way wider than the boulevard. You know what I mean? You've got maybe, maybe a couple dozen feet of boulevard, you know? This street doesn't look like that's the case. But we work with folks on that and to try and, try and avoid those issues. And then as well as reinstallation of those, those items to try and encourage folks to wait. And we, we work as closely as we can, although there are some situations where the contractor, you know, that's, when we sign the contract with them, it's, it's up to their means and methods. And we're, you know, subject to their schedule. And that does change on occasion. So, you know, we just do our best to, to minimize the headaches for folks all the way around the horn.
And so if they do have to go into their property outside of that easement, I mean, is that usually covered by the contractor? Or that's just something that the property owner has to end up incurring as expense as well?
If a contractor gets over a line, they become liable.
So ma'am, we're, we typically don't open for discussion. So what I'll say now is that we'll have the city engineer and inspectors who are out there come take a look at it and make sure that things are done and taken care of appropriately. Thank you.
Mayor, I would like to add on to that, we should determine if the work occurred within the public right-of-way or not.
For sure.
If it's in the public right-of-way, then the trees were removed, they were city trees, they had to come out. If, you know, there's private property in the right-of-way, it's unfortunate, but it's in the right-of-way. And typically, you know, that owners are supposed to move their, their stuff out of the right-of-way. But to me, the key question is, was it in the right-of-way or not? And if it was in the right-of-way, then it's unfortunate, but it was within the construction limits. If it was, you know, outside the right-of-way, we need to pay for it.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Contractor.
The contractor, yeah. Our breach of force of contractor to pay it.
Is that something that obviously can be looked into? Because I, I want to know as well. I entirely understand this is more of a, I'll make a question. Is that something that we can look into and get the feedback on so both Ms. Todd and the council are informed?
Yeah, absolutely. Mayor and council will, I'll follow up on this matter first thing tomorrow. I'll have a conversation with construction staff and we'll, we'll go to the bottom of it.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Just a question with the fifty-seventh street portion of it. It was in his email about the bituminous was chosen by the residents back in two thousand and ten. I know this was kind of a question that was asked in the two thousand and twenty-five, excuse me, the two thousand and twenty-six assessments as well. And again, I know we've talked about this a lot, but maybe, could you speak to that again as far as like how that impacts the lifespan of this? Yes, you know, there's the twenty-five-year lifespan that was, was put on this, but that is, I'm assuming probably with the concrete curb versus the bituminous. If you could just speak to that a little bit as far as how that changes the life expectancy?
Thank you very much. So concrete curb and gutter is a strategy in, in, you know, local neighborhood streets especially, when you're using bituminous, that, it, it does a few things. It confines the bituminous, all right? Bituminous asphalt is flexible, okay? A lot of times, especially in areas where you don't see concrete, you'll see a, where you can tell where the school bus or where the, where the garbage truck goes, you see that deterioration start to develop almost like a tire track, kind of on the edge of the road. And that's because when we go through our thaw cycle, you know, and there's any sort of heavy loading on a vehicle that's not restricted, like a garbage truck or a school bus, it starts to flex. Bituminous, when it's confined by concrete, it can't expand and crack as well as it can if it's unconfined. So that's, that's really one, one stra, you know, one reason why it's a great partner for bituminous streets like this. Another is that the number one enemy of, you know, any street is water getting into this upgrade. Having a, a concrete curb which is a rigid and it's a rigid material that can be built to a, a tighter grade than any sort of pavement ensures better course of drainage for the street itself, all right? And we, and now when we do our projects, we can seal that, that gap where the interface is between the concrete and bituminous so that water doesn't kind of get into that space. So really, the concrete curbing, you know, it, it's really, it maxim, it, there's, there's several other things, you know, maintenance related to, you know, snowplows getting, you know, into people's lawns, you know, nobody likes that. Just general traffic control, people not paying attention, looking at their phone or something, veer off and run in someone's boulevard, you know? Concrete curbing provides that barrier, not just physical, but also visual to, you know, keep cars in the street. So, but, but what I will hearken back to is that it's, it absolutely is, you know, it, it maximizes the life cycle and protects the investment that we're making in the street, in a bituminous roadway. It seals it up, it confines it. There was a question about mill and overlay earlier. It gives us that, that edge to mill against and confines that pavement when it goes down again. If we were reclaiming a street that had concrete curb and gutter on it, it can remain in place. And it's, it's a cost that, that spans generations of asphalt. So it's, it's just really, you know, from top to bottom, the best, you know, edge treatment, in my professional opinion, for a local bituminous roadway.
And, and do you think, I mean, is it, is it possible for you to say, or is there too many variables? Is it possible to say that you feel pretty confident this road would have lasted longer if concrete curb had been put in in, in two thousand and ten?
I feel confident that at least if, if the, if the asphalt went to heck, we wouldn't be paying for curb and gutter in that section now, and we could potentially even maybe do a mill and overlay, you know, which would have been a lot cheaper and, and residents aren't assessed for in Lake Elmo.
Okay.
That was Mayor Holt.
And I know we have been presented with this previously, but as we have many members in the audience and people watching for transparency, once this level of work happens, how does that timeframe now work for how the city's guidelines work for the next steps? The ten-year, twenty-year window between the future mill and overlay, when that is, when we're doing the crack seal?
Absolutely, thank you, excellent question. So we, we have a pavement management program that governs these maintenance actions. So when we rebuild the roadway, it's kind of a fresh start. It resets our curve at the top of, you know, deterioration way down here, now we're, we're back up here. We wait for a frost cycle or two for any sort of incidental cracking to develop in pavements. And we will seal the cracks on those streets. And then we will follow that with a chip seal, typically within, you know, a three to five-year span of that pavement being reconstructed. What that chip seal does is it, it seals the top of the pavement, prevents, you know, any sort of water penetration through those cracks that we've sealed. And it's, it's a very, very, it, it's, it's not much money, it's a very cost-effective way to, to buy some more time before a greater improvement such as a mill and overlay. Now, looking down the road fifteen to twenty years, we're looking at that mill and overlay option for these streets that have been reconstructed with concrete curb and gutter. The mill and overlay, you know, we grind off the top inch and a half or two inches. Again, the curb resets, it, it provides, you know, structural benefit for the roadway, not just a new smooth surface. And we'll go through that cycle again of crack seal, seal coat. And so now we're looking at a road that's, that's been in place now for, for potentially, you know, thirty-five, forty years before, you know, it gets to a point again where we need to potentially reclaim it or reconstruct it or, you know? And if we're lucky, we can maybe get another mill and overlay out of it. When we rebuild streets now, we're looking to rebuild for that fifty-year life cycle, you know? Not that, you know, twenty, twenty-five year like we've talked about.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dragicic?
You know, we've talked about this fifty-seventh street, and we have a big thing at the public.
Question.
Well, I'm going to get there.
Okay.
Okay, and my question is, is, is it, does anyone share some sympathy for those folks who paid an assessment in two thousand and ten? And fifteen years later, they're going to be, they're going to pay a full assessment again? I have some discussion about that when we get to the discussion part.
Fair enough. Councilmember Kragnis?
Yeah, I was curious about the reduction of twenty-two percent from the preliminary estimate. What was the reason behind that?
Thank you, great question again, Councilmember Kragnis. That is primarily because Thank you, great question again, uh, Councilman Cragness. That is primarily because we've got such good bids. So we're estimating, um, you know, these preliminary numbers based on kind of historical cost estimates, and we like to actually be kind of on the higher end, you know? We don't wanna be the low bidder.
Yeah.
You know, so, um, you know, it prepares folks. But we also wanna be realistic. We don't wanna be so high that we're scaring anybody, including the good members of the council here as to, well, we can't afford that, you know? So it's a balancing act. We're doing our best to, to put in a, a conservative number that's also realistic. We did, you know, uh, this, this year, I'll tell you, across the board, uh, the bidding environment was pretty aggressive by, by contractors that do this kind of work. Um, for spring all the way through kinda like almost late summer. So those costs did go down pretty much because we got good bids that were twenty-five-ish percent below what our estimate was.
Got it, thank you.
Alright. I'll entertain a motion for discussion.
Motion to approve resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash zero-seven-one, adopting the final assessment role for the twenty-twenty-five street and utility project?
It's the amended one, right? The revised. This one.
As amended.
Oh, because of the, as amended.
Second.
That's because of the nine-six, nine-six?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second discussion.
Councilmember Dragicich.
I think that, you know, the point made by the residents on fifty-seventh street, well, that was built in two thousand and ten. Now we're fifteen years later. I know we perhaps it wasn't built to the right standards or whatever. I would contend, you know, the city had the ability to build it to the right standards. None of us were here then. Um, but it wasn't, but are we penalizing them because we made a bad decision? And I think some reduction would be appropriate for that. However, that being said, I think the curb and gutter should be assessed at the same percentage, but that the other portions of the project should be, some reduction to reflect the fact it was only fifteen years old.
I guess I, I would argue the other side, Councilmember Dragicich, that there was an option to put concrete curb and gutter there at the time. The roadway, if it was in fact, you know, I, I've seen the back when townships and things and that this more rural area was being developed, that roadway probably didn't have the appropriate subgrade. Might have had some gravel on it. I don't believe that the specifications were at the match to what they could have been or should have been. I think that the following two thousand and ten fix that was there was probably less than what was appropriate for the time and that the roadway served its purpose with whatever maintenance that was, was etabled on there. I guess I'm of this, of the mindset that the city could have paid the full seventy percent of the cost for the better fix at that point in time. And it would have lasted longer and I say, it, it
Who controlled those fixes?
For, for me, it's, uh, I, I guess I'm not of the same mindset.
But who controlled those fixes? The city was in the driver's seat for those. It was a city street. And we allowed it to be built to a lesser standard.
There were residents involved that requested that no curb and gutter be put in at that location, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd say the curb and gutter should be assessed as, under our current policy. The curb and gutter should be, but the street itself, the, so city see, the city did the improvement. It, it had the ability to do it right or to do it less than right.
Councilmember Holt.
Related, but not related, because the question did come up, so I do wanna address it. So, Ms. Todd, you had asked about some of the three M stuff, since it, otherwise, if it had not been asked, this is not related. But in terms of expenditures, the three M settlement group per statute has to send a report into the legislature. And that is an annual report that describes line by line all the projects, not just for Lake Elmo, but every, uh, entity and municipality that receives funds. So that is part of a, an annual report. If you want to, I can provide the link for you afterwards. Or actually be easier to email me and I can provide that. Uh, that is the one thing the legislature does have control over. They don't have control over the fund, but they did pass a law saying at least have that kind of level of transparency. In terms of, uh, the well, for any user who has a private well, I know many of you in the room have private wells. The city does not have received funding for your wells. You don't pay taxes to the city for your wells. We receive utility funds for people who are on city water. With that said, the settlement, if, and this is another place where I can post it as well, the city can, we have it on the city's webpage under the water area. Settlement dollars exist for testing for a well that may be contaminated. Uh, there's a, the, the line has gotten smaller, luckily, but there's still a line and I haven't heard lately how long that line is. It's in the three to six month range, last I was told. But that goes through the settlement process with MPCA. Any well that is contaminated above the health index levels is then eligible for a remedy using those settlement dollars while they still are out there. Uh, the city does not have a role in that when it's a private well, so I just wanna make, make that clear, but absolutely, you need the information. You obviously have concerns about it as you, as I would if I lived in that spot too. So the process exists and many people in this room can help to provide that information, but it's not necessarily a ci- a city role. Outside of water topic, um, I I lean in the seventy percent side with the mayor, thirty percent with you. My, my thing would be there was a lower cost at the time because of it not having curb. It never should have been stated or understood that that would be a twenty-five year ex- expectancy. When the industry knows, when you put, even at that time in twenty-ten, the industry knows when you put bituminous gutter, it's not a, as good of a product and it will not last as long. So there, there was a, a lower cost to begin with. I, I don't feel that this is, would be an appro-, would be appropriate to change it for that purpose. On, on my end, I think is I'll, I'll leave that for now, but the other item I was going to say is we, we get questions from time to, pretty much over half these projects in terms of assessment roles. For exceptions, for a couple of similar reasons that, that come in. One thing that we have to keep in mind on our end is the assessment has to be uniform. We can't prorate it based upon when a person moved in. We can't prorate it based upon, uh, one street versus the other in terms of what happened in twenty-ten versus what didn't. It has to be uniform and it has to be consistent. And I, I don't feel that we have been provided and provided a situation where there would be a reason that is justifiable under the statute to change it, would be my position at this time.
Councilmember Dragicich.
I think it has to be uniform and consistent, but from area to area. You, you can't say it's uniform and consistent across the entire city. We have five or six areas where we did streets and in that, in one particular area has to be consistent. You can't single out individual properties. But fifty, thirty-third street doesn't have to be the same as fifty-seventh street.
Agreed.
The other thing, I, I wanted to back up to some point you made. Um, the residents who spoke to us talked about sewer and water and stormwater. I wanna point out for the public that there are no property tax dollars that support those utilities. Those utilities are supported by the user fees, paid by people who are connected to those utilities um, or, or have those utilities in their area. So, um, you know, the they're not tied to the assessment piece at all, except they said, if we improve, we're assessed for the improvement. But there are no tax dollars supporting public utilities in the city of Lake Elmo. Um, I just want everyone to realize that because I think there's a misconception that that in fact is the case. The users pay them, pay them through a fee.
Any other discussion?
I was gonna add, you know, I, I under- the, the frustrations for sure I get, you know, with the fifty-seventh street, I, I guess I am having a hard time because I don't know how to, I don't know how to calculate the number, you know, I, I know he came up with a, a calculation of how to get there. I, I think, but they don't factor in the fact that the bitum- bituminous was chosen by the residents. So then, you know, like you mentioned, you know, maybe the city should have been a little more firm and said, no, this is our standard and that's what we're gonna do and, you know, that's what we're doing now for this reason. So how do you, you know, how do you change the, the calculation based off of that? I just, I don't know how we'd come to a number. I think it would potentially set, uh, maybe not the best precedent for it. So I'm struggling a little bit to, to see how we'd go with a reduction based off of the situation.
How do you know the residents picked the bituminous? Is this, is this something in the public record that we were back and found?
Yeah, in his email. While the project offered either concrete or bituminous curb and gutter, bituminous was chosen by the residents.
Bituminous curb and gutter.
Correct.
I'm not with the three, so
No.
From my perspective, the concrete curb and gutter should be assessed based on our policy. Thirty-three percent or thirty, whatever the number I forget is. There should be no reduction in the curb and gutter assessment. Um, because that's clearly a benefit that they didn't have before, that they're getting now.
But the bituminous roadway deteriorated quicker as a result of not having the concrete curb. So how do we calculate that?
The, the, the thing that I like is that, um, you know, we have, we have a standard that's going in now. Again, it'd be nice to be a Monday morning quarterback and go back and be able to, to change things. I'm really happy that the bid environment brought in, um, very good bids based on oil prices and things of that nature for the bituminous that was used on this project and you know, decreasing the overall assessment per unit for that roadway by three thousand two hundred dollars, right? So, um, there is a discount there in that, that it wasn't, didn't hit the engineer's estimate. It came down, it is what it is. Who's to say that, you know, two years ago, that when they did mine, that estimates were high with bituminous asphalt? I mean, do we base it off the engineer's estimate? Do we base it off of the actual bid prices? There's all, all kinds of variables you could throw into this. And I guess I'm just, I'm gonna stay with where we're at. I would, I, my viewpoint is to stay where we're at now with what we've given, been given and what we delivered.
I agree with that. I think keeping it more of a uniform price or cost across the board is the way to go.
Then I'll call the question. All is in favor approving resolution adopting the final assessment, the revised amended final assessment role for the twenty-twenty-five street and utility project. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed, same, same sign?
Aye.
Alright, let it know that it's passed four-one. You just gotta stay up there, aren't you? Public hearing about final assessment role for Stillwater Area School District Utility Improvements. Did you watch her do it the last time, so you can go for this one?
Hold on.
He's testing your, your learning ability here, Nate.
And you have an audience watching, so no pressure.
It's on this screen.
Pressure was on.
I know. No. It was just in the, it was behind the one. Close. Second place is the first loser though, right? Mayor and council, before you is another, um, item to, uh, adopt final assessment role for the Stillwater Area School District Utility Improvements. Uh, I will go over, um, set improvements. And then we'll talk about the assessments for this. So this, uh, to recap, this project was to install some, um, you know, primarily, uh, sewage improvements uh, for the new Lake Elmo Elementary School at ten, and, uh, Lake Elmo Avenue. And then also to provide, um, sanitary sewer and water service for Oakland Middle School. So to achieve this, we ran a new gravity line, uh, new, a new sanitary sewer gravity line into an existing lift station, um, at the, the Royal Gulf Development into Oakland Junior High, um, as well as a, a water line. Then, uh, we upsized the existing forest main that ran from the Royal Gulf Lift Station down to, um, previously connected to an existing sixteen-inch forest main line, um, that ran out of the old village area down Lake Elmo Avenue. That line then ran down Lake Elmo Avenue and discharges at Fifth Street into, um, the gravity system. So, um, so what did we do? Well, we had to upsize the line to accommodate, um, the sewage from Oakland. And then we had to upsize the line to accommodate the sewage from, uh, the school. And so we disconnected those, we disconnected the line from the existing sixteen-inch forest main line. If you're, if you're not following me, you know, let me know. And then we built a new forest main that runs parallel with the existing sixteen down to Fifth Street and discharges. Okay, so this allows for a private lift station at the new elementary school to, to discharge two ten-inch forest main as well as it picks up the, um, existing sewage flows from the Royal Gulf area, but also from Oakland Middle School. Lot there. Hey, look at that. I just talked to you without even looking at the slide. So again, um, this project was, um, was, uh, coordinated with the school district, and the school district actually submitted a waiver of assessment, uh, prior to this work being undertaken, so they cannot contest their assessment. Uh, we have communicated that their assessment did come in quite a bit lower than, uh, the estimate, so, um, the preliminary sewer assessment for the elementary school, uh, was almost a hundred thousand dollars. It came in at just over six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the cost. Um, the middle school, um, it was, the sanitary sewer assessment again was seven hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. And that ended up coming in at six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Uh, no water main assessment for the elementary school. But for Oakland, which needed the new water main extended, the estimate was a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, and that is actually, that came in at a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. There was one residential property along Ten Street on the south side, kinda tucked in between the road and Oakland that did receive service from this project too that is being assessed. Um, and so you can see their assessment is, um, pretty, pretty modest for, uh, getting sewer and water service. With that, uh, I, the council holds a public hearing. I ask you to approve the following, uh, resolution, approve of resolution adopting the final assessment role for the Stillwater Area School District Utility Improvement Project.
Are there any questions for the city engineer before we go to a public hearing? Okay. I'll entertain a motion for a public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Alright, we have a motion to go into a public hearing for a resolution of adopting the final assessment role for the Stillwater Area School District Utility Improvements. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is open. I don't see anybody from the school district here. So I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing, uh, for the, uh, resolution adopting final assessment role for Stillwater Area School District Two Utility Improvements Project.
Motion to close public hearing.
Support.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public hearing's closed. I'll entertain a motion.
Approve a resolution adopting the final assessment role for the Stillwater Area School District Utility Improvements Project.
Support.
We have a motion.
Sorry, motion to approve, sorry.
Alright. So, discussion, any discussion? So, discussion, any discussion? Councilmember holds.
I just think staff at both the district and the city need kudos on this, cause the, this project was an extremely fast track project and the amount of work that was required to get utilities there. And the originality and figuring out solutions was pretty high. But there are two thousand students between those two buildings, a lot of staff and a lot of families who are directly benefiting from that work that had to be done on a very fast track nature, so good job.
I can't claim any credit here, but I would certainly pass it along. Thank you very much.
Alright, any other discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor approving the resolution adopting the final assessment role for the Stillwater area school district utility improvement project? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We have, uh, landfill solar farm. Presenting this. Director Stopa with, uh, Mr. Manzera.
It's gonna take a second. So Commissioner Manzera is here today to talk about the, uh, next steps for the solar landfill project. Uh, this came up at the EDA meeting. And there was a specific request, uh, for the council to look, into this issue. So the issue before the council is the EDA made a motion to ask the city council, they want staff and the city attorney to research restrictions and possible solutions for developing a solar farm on the old landfill site. So that's the overarching question. And then Tony, I think you could give the background analysis.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I'm Tony Manzera. Uh, thank you mayor and council for considering this. As you may know, uh, I've been on the EDA since twenty twenty-two and one of the, items that I've been trying to get, at least some forward motion is to use the landfill for something rather than just, uh, you know, growing grass on it. And so, uh, one possibility and is included into zoning for that that area is to build a solar power system that would benefit the city. So, the, uh, the topology of the landfill, the way it was, was finally finished up, is they, they formed a mound rather than a flat surface. So that makes it somewhat difficult to build anything there. Just, let's go back to, back to nineteen sixty-nine when they started dumping stuff there. The counties decided in their great wisdom that they take an old, uh, basically a gravel pit, which had not been lined, still had water in it, and start dumping anybody's garbage in there. So the counties, Ramsey County and Washington County collected roughly, let's say, two million dollars worth of tipping fees over a period of roughly five years to put in whatever, whatever people wanted to dump there. Then it was closed because it was filled up in nineteen seventy-five. And then the, the bad stuff started to happen. Uh, gas came out, stuff leaked. Uh, they decided that they had to, because of the, um, water pressure that was building up there, they'd have to pump out some water. So they sprayed the water up, up into the air. And with the idea of destroying the volatile organic compound, which works, but they didn't count on, on the PFAs that were in there. Those were spread out over the countryside. There was a methane explosion. Finally, it was taken off the superfund list and left the way, the way it is. Then we had to spend money to go ahead and dig it all up and put it all back in. So Lake Mel was really suffered from this mess that's been created. And I think we should be able to get something out of it. The issue is that there is, it's unclear if you, I've talked to a dozen people about what could be done. And the, the issue becomes whether the general obligation bonds have to be paid off before you can do anything beneficial there. I've been told that. I've been told that the, uh, if it's for public benefit, you do not, do not need to pay off the general obligation bonds. And what I'm asking for, basically, this is how it was owned. Uh, what I'm asking for is, uh, whatever time it would require from the city attorney's office to look into this and explain to us what is actually the requirement. If, if we could, uh, lease out the land for solar power and get the money back from the, from the value of the, of the solar power without paying off the bonds, which appears to be one option, then I think we should do it. If we have to pay off the bonds, then the money has to come from someplace. And I've been told that nothing's gonna go through the legislature in the next couple of years, uh, because of the political situation. So maybe nothing would happen. But at least if we know that nothing would happen, then we could stop working on it. But it, right now, the idea would be to at least get an answer. If we don't have to pay off the bonds, which I've been told by, by one, one, uh, company who is into the solar power system, if we don't have to pay off the bonds if it's gonna be used for public benefit, then I think we should proceed. So, basically, we're just asking. And these are all people I've, I've contacted and talked to about different things. I believe it's technically feasible to build something there based on discussion with people who actually build landfill-specific solar power stations that you don't have to put any post in, in to the ground. So we're basi- we basically wanna find out what the law actually says and how it applies to this situation. So we're basically asking for a few thousand dollars to pay the city attorney to look into this. Thank you very much for your consideration.
So have we asked for an estimate of cost of time from council to look into this? Have they given an estimate of time cost?
Cause the, the community.
We haven't, we haven't, we don't have an estimate at this point, um, for how long this would take. What we've looked at recently is that what Mr. Manzera is talking about is a power purchase agreement, public benefit, you may not be required to pay off the bonds. So I reached out to Michael Wilhelm, he had Excel to see if he has experience with this. So the next step would be to continue to talk to industry experts. And then if we can't figure it out, if that's the approach the council wants to take, then look to legal to see if there's clarification that we would, um, need from at that point. But we don't have an estimate at this point to see how long that would take.
What's mayor holds?
So the city owns it. Does it, is there still any legal responsibility by MPCA with their oversight? I know it's not in the superfund anymore, but it's still in the Minnesota landfill, the, uh, program. Tony can probably say what the program was, but have you talked with Kirk or others as to what their, their ongoing responsibility is for that site?
I, I talked to Hafnavi, who was the, uh, the supervisor of the closed landfill project. And he, he basically said that we have to get this resolved. And he would be the person who would decide if the design that we propose would be acceptable to put there. But, but the whole legal thing, I contacted Jennifer Hessmer's office to find out what the actual bond requirement is. And, uh, they basically told me that, well, that we're, we're busy now, but we'll look into it. And, uh, I've spoke, spoke with three or four solar power developers, including Evan Carlson, Bob Olson, um, Mary Kay Olson over at, uh, Cooperative Energy Futures. And I get different answers from different people. And so, uh, it would be really nice to know if it's worth working on this or not. I think that if, if we did not have to pay off the bonds, there's a clear way to make some money on this. If we did, we have to step back and see what, what's, how to go about that.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Dragasic?
How are the bonds paid off now? What's the source of revenue?
General obligation bonds are, are paid off at the rate of, uh, one fortieth per year.
What's the source of the revenue to pay off?
I think it's the state of Minnesota. The, the, you know, we paid four, four point two three million dollars to cover the landfill at, as a general obligation bond in twenty fourteen. So roughly three quarters of that money is still left, left to be paid off.
Paid off by the state, thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Dragasic.
One thing I would have is, if they're forty-year bonds, they probably don't have a call date till maybe twenty years out. If you had to pay them off, there'd be no way to, to do that earlier than the call date. Um, you could escrow an amount that would be sufficient to pay them off at the call date, but they'd be outstanding until the call date.
I think the question now is to see if there's a way to move forward without having to go through general paying off the GOB, right? So then the question is, what is the cost expectation that we would absorb in trying to figure out that answer? If I'm not mistaken.
Yes, I'm asking.
And we don't, we don't know that right now.
No, I'm, I'm asking if the city would look in, look into the legal situation and read the law carefully and, and explain to us what, what we have to do.
Alright, this almost feels more like a workshop discussion item as we don't have any motions or anything at this time, but, I, I think I'm okay asking the rest of the council if they're cool with, uh, Community Director Stopa to inquire about an estimate of what this might cost the city to get into and see if there's a way without the GOB. I mean, I, I don't think we can make any decisions without some more information, right? So, I mean.
Yeah.
Would you like to bring it to a workshop sometime early next year?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's just, you know, maybe understanding what we would be in for and whether that's a risk the council would, would wanna move forward with.
And we can move forward with number one and that could be a free, yeah, not free answer, it's his time, it's still taking time.
Well, I think the question's already been asked from our local representative for Excel, right? So that's, that's already happening.
Okay.
So then the next question would be, what, what exposure would we have as a city cost-wise related to, uh, the legal review?
Yeah.
There. And that's probably more of a, if we get some more information and council can provide some background or an estimate of that exposure and cost, then, then, then we can discuss that in a workshop, I think.
And I don't recall offhand, cause entities differ, but, I mean, staff incurs legal costs on an ongoing basis without requiring city council approval? I don't recall if we have an amount in place to say if it's more than this amount, it requires council approval, but that, those costs incur from time to time. Do you recall, either of you, if we have a threshold where we've said council? I know we have other thresholds for other things and I don't think there was one for this.
No, not that I'm aware of. Um, we wanted to make sure that the council, um, would approve staff spending the time continuing to investigate this, as well as if we need to use our city attorney for expert, um, advice that you would, um, be okay with incurring those costs, yes or no? So that's why we wanted to bring it to you. It's not, um, on our current goals. So that's why we're unsure kind of your direction on the priority of this.
Right.
So that's why we want to talk about it.
Yeah, I think that's, that's something we should discuss in a workshop. Once we find out, I mean, we'll get something from Excel and then we can move on to that next step and talk about it.
Like, give enough so that, I mean, like, I guess what I'm hearing is, don't spend a lot of time on it until we have a workshop.
I think so.
I, I, I mean, that's, I'm in favor of that.
Yeah.
I, I, I think this has to be something that, in that workshop that we're discussing, obviously just beyond, what does it look like cost-wise, uh, to figure this out if, you know, from the GOB standpoint, is this something we wanna do? Is it how we wanna use the land? I think maybe it's worthwhile maybe having that full discussion before we start, and Tony, I mean, thank you for doing this. This is, I mean, this is really a great idea and, you know, I appreciate all the work that's been done. I just think that the workshop would make a lot of sense really before we put more time.
That would make sense to, to get people's opinion on that. Uh, we're hoping to put this into the EDA work plan for the coming year. If it turns out that it, that council doesn't, doesn't wanna go forward with this, then we won't, uh, won't bother with it. But, uh, you know, after, after this is decided, it'll go one way or the other. Then we have to talk about, you know, what kind of business plan would you actually use to put a solar power system in? But if you can't do it, well, then you just can't do it.
Right.
That's the end of the story. So, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. Next item is, uh, High Point Crossing Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Mr. First.
Alright, good evening, mayor, members of the council. I'll pull the presentation up here. Give me a moment. Okay, so, uh, you'll remember this project from, uh, around this time last year. Uh, as a refresher for everyone on the High Point Crossing project, the city did approve a preliminary plat and open space planned unit development in September of twenty twenty-four. The, uh, High Point Crossing project is on a property that's just over seventy-eight acres. There are six wetlands on the site. There's an existing homestead. Uh, sixty-five residential units were approved through that preliminary plat. It would be served by city water with a community septic system. And this is just off of, or there would be a connection, um, from Inwood to Imperial Avenue north on the north side of this project. So, um, from the time since that preliminary plat approval and open space planned unit development approval, the developer identified issues with the community septic system that would serve the sixty-five homes as part of that development. Uh, the issue was only found after additional due diligence was performed by the developer and the developer is here and can speak to some of that due diligence that they did. Essentially, the community septic system was ruled out as an option for sewers. That caused the developer to uh, look at alternatives to provide wastewater treatment on this property. Uh, the options were presented to the city council and the, uh, step that was identified uh, was to move forward with a comprehensive plan amendment to bring this property into the MUSA. I do wanna show you, here is the site plan that was initially approved through the, uh, preliminary plat with open space planned unit development. I do wanna note one typo in my report. At that time, the planning commission did recommend a denial. The city council did approve the open space planned unit development. So what was proposed through the comprehensive plan amendment? This was, um, there is a, a number of different things that were proposed as part of this. Number one was to bring the property within, within the MUSA, but then there was, part of this proposal was to create a, um, new future land use category that allowed for an open space development in the same vein as what's allowed for in the city's OP PUD standards. So this is something that we've looked at. Other communities have adopted similar future land use categories and so this was an option uh, that the developer decided to pursue. So that new, uh, OPLDR district, we were calling it, would have a density range between two to three units per acre and necessitate open space preservation of at least fifty percent of that development into perpetuity and, you know, be held by the city. Uh, there was that MUSA amendment that would provide this property to be located within the metropolitan, um, urban service area. The sewer connection would be made south from this development, uh, through a forest main along Inwood. This new future land use category wouldn't be limited to this particular property. There are other properties within the city where this could be appropriate, but that, uh, those properties had not yet been identified, um, as to exactly where this could potentially be used in the future. Uh, this idea was pretty thoroughly vetted with the Met Council staff to make sure that we had a very clear understanding of, uh, how this would work from a density standpoint, any ramifications that it might have for the city on a regional policy conformance basis. And so that, that all went into the review. This item, I'll, I'll just kind of pause and say is mostly just an update for you tonight. This is advisory. Uh, and we'll talk about some of, um, some of the, some of that here on the slide. So the planning commission, uh, held a public hearing in July. Uh, there were some comments, uh, from the. held a public hearing in July. There were some comments from the public that were opposed to the, the amendments that are, I just talked about. The planning commission also did ultimately recommend a denial. However, we, we said to the planning commission that we wouldn't bring this project in front of the city council until we had the benefit of a sewer capacity analysis. So, as we have to do when a property is proposed to be added to the MUSA, the city has to conduct a pretty thorough review of its sewer system to understand, is there capacity for this, this new development? That sewer study is still not done, in large part because of coordination that's still ongoing with the Met Council. So, for that reason, the developer did request an extension of ninety days for this decision. So, our new deadline for a determination on the application is January twenty-third of 2026, so next year. The staff can't really provide any clear answers on sewer capacity relative to this request for this property to be added at this time, again, because we have to really understand, I think, more wholly, holistically, what the capacity is based on coordination with the Metropolitan Council, so they accept the wastewater that comes from the city. So, that's generally just an update for you on the status of this. Again, no decisions asked for this evening. However, the developer did provide a couple of different alternatives that they are considering, should the, should the sewer issue be a problem and cause this comprehensive plan amendment not to be approved. So, I'm going to quickly show those two different alternatives that the developer is, is considering.
Just a question.
Yep.
So, the Met Council's aware of the bottleneck, and have they given us a timeframe in which their modeling can be done to figure out if they plan on addressing it, when, and if they do, when they would plan on addressing it? Because we know these things take some investment in time to
Right.
to figure out.
Yeah, absolutely. So that would be part of the, part of that ongoing coordination is getting a timeline from the council for
So we don't have one now?
We don't have that right now, as far as I'm aware, but I'll, I'll look to Nate if there's any update. City engineer?
No, Nathan's right. There's just been loose discussion. There's no firm timetable for any sort of improvement to, like you say, clear up a bottleneck in the system.
I will say staff understand that is an important question, so it's not lost on staff that this is a really consequential piece of information to get.
Because they didn't get effects more than just this, correct?
Yep, absolutely. So that's definitely on, on our minds as we work with the Met Council and try to get that information.
Okay.
So I'm going to move into, if there's no other questions, just the overview of these alternatives. And again, these alternatives would be for rural development that's not served by public sewer. So the first concept is probably familiar to the council as this was discussed before the comp plan amendment came before you or the city. So this has approximately thirty units. It provides a street connection from Inwood to Imperial that you've seen before in a cul-de-sac. Properties are generally one and a half plus acres in size. The concept on the screen now has eleven units on two different cul-de-sacs, so no street connection here. These are proposed to have private drives serving from the public roads along Imperial or Inwood to the home sites. So these are very, I could call them very rural lots. The smallest lot area would be just over, under six acres. So again, eleven lots there. So, very high level review in the report. There was really not any vetting on these alternatives at this time, just because it's extremely preliminary. And there, there is a assessment though here on the screen, and that was in the report, on what some of these, what these two concepts would mean. So, if the city approved a thirty lot rural development like you saw on the screen, it's possible that there's requests for wetlands and ponding to be allowed on certain lots. That's not a city standard. The use of PVC versus ductile iron for water main through the project was something discussed previously. Having a minimum lot size of one and a half acres for those lots, and there has also been conversations about having some different rural road section applied to the, the, the street connecting Inwood and Imperial. And again, I know that the councils had some, some discussions on road sections. So, the eleven lot rural development concept would mean, again, that there's likely wetlands and ponding allowed within the lots. I'd have two private drives coming from the public road that serve five and six home sites respectively. No public road connection would be made from Imperial to Inwood. And notably, part of that eleven lot rural development, oh, concept included no public water main connection. So those would have to be then served by private wells. And as we've discussed previously, the city has a longstanding development policy for requiring public water for new development. So, a couple of other notes for you on these alternatives. There are design exceptions that are noted that would come along with these different alternatives. So, they would, they have not been and would need to be thoroughly vetted by staff as to, like, what's the nature of the pros and cons of accepting these types of exceptions. If the council's open to either of these concepts, staff should be guided to prepare in-depth review of the exceptions that would be needed, and then provide an additional information to council on what they might mean in the form of a presentation and report. If the council were to theoretically move forward with one of these alternatives before accepting a subdivision application, staff feel that it would be most appropriate to actually come up with specific design standards before an application is accepted instead of kind of creating new standards on the fly. So for example, PVC versus ductile iron, that's a kind of a citywide standard question. So, those are just a few thoughts for you as you think about these two alternatives and what it might mean to approve them. So, just, just a reminder that this is an update for you, and it's an advisory item. Any feedback that you do provide to the developer on concept plans is non-binding, and I'd just caution you, you know, before you get too deep into the weeds on any, on anything. So, that's what I have prepared for you. The developer is here and has a, a presentation that they prepared, providing some information from, from their perspective. So, I'll go ahead and pull that up if there's any questions for him. For me, I'm happy to take them at this time.
Any questions for Mr. First?
Councilmember Holtz? As this is very high level preliminary with hypothetical number two, where there's private wells, I guess I would ask to make sure that staff verifies distance from White Bear Lake. I'm getting on the GIS five point oh-one miles to the northwest corner of the parcel. It's not exact, but just to make sure that's something that is looked into, just make sure that no hypothetical well is within the five miles.
Thanks.
Because that's not allowed.
Appreciate that. No, appreciate the comment, and I, I think that that would be part of that, you know, if the city's going to accept, be open to ex- exceptions, that's one of those things that absolutely needs the, the additional review. So that's a really good, that's a really good point.
What is the particular rea, and we can get this with a presentation. Are you aware of a particular reason why the roads don't connect in proposal two?
I'll let the developer speak to that design consideration. It might be related to cost, but I'm not entirely sure.
Thanks.
So, I'm going to try and get that presentation pulled up. It might take me a moment. All right, here we go.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm back, yes. And I would say, you know, I think the elephant of the room is the sewer capacity issue. I think that when I started this, back in June when we were talking, I thought it was really an issue of just connection, like where we were going to connect, and there was going to be a study about the connection point. I think the idea that there wasn't capacity might have altered how we even gotten start, you know, how, how we started down this path. So that was, I bet, you know, I'd say if there was a disagreement, it was just about whether or not there was capacity. I thought there was capacity. I understand that now we're finding out that there isn't, and I think in, in, in large part, that might be because the Met Council has a constraint downstream that they didn't really make the city that aware of, I think. And so I think that's part of the story. But I was just in a quick, I, I, some of what I have is duplicative, but I was just going to go through the history a little bit and talk about the comp plan amendment. This is not that long, it's fairly short. Talk about the choices as I see it, and then just present a couple, those two rural options, and maybe explain a little bit about what we're looking at. So, again, just like Nathan has talked about, we, we started, we actually put this property under contract in August of 2023. So, it's been a really, you know, and we, we started with an OP PUD, which was something that nobody had done for almost eighteen years in the city. So it took a while to kind of get everybody figured, you know, to figure that different, that type of development out. And then, of course, we brought that to the council in December. Eventually, that made it through the process, and it was approved by the city council, by you all, a year ago, as Nathan mentioned. Then, we started working on our final plans. The, the community septic system was a huge part of that. And if we have, I kind of went through that in June, so I'm not going to go through all the detail. But again, we, we did a whole bunch of additional testing, which eventually, we had these things called hydraulic connectivity tests, which led into a mounding study. And those were things that were, at that time, now being required by the state when you're doing a community septic system. Long and the short of it, it was that the soils on the site were determined not to be suitable for a community septic system. And so, you know, here we spent a year and a half on a project, getting to what we thought was the finish line and find out we didn't have a project. And so, we spent a few months trying to figure out with staff and others, you know, what we could, what we could do. That's when we came back to you in June and said, hey, we have a couple options. We could try to get sanitary sewer, if you're open to it, to the same project you approved, or we provided you with a rural option, and, and that we are willing to do. And at that point, the direction from the council was that you preferred the, the sanitary sewer option, which led into the comprehensive plan amendment that we have tonight. The plan on the screen is the, what Nathan showed you as well. That's the, the plan that you approved last September. Sixty-five lots, you know, seventy-foot wide lots. Fifty percent of that area was open space. There was that two-hundred-foot buffer on the site, and it was at, and that density was at one-point-eight units per acre. Then, we, we applied for a comprehensive plan amendment for this new guy, new land use called OPLDR that would just basically end up being as a part of your comp plan. Same, similar principles to the OP PUD, but with city sewer, as Nathan mentioned. And then kind of first and foremost, they upped the, the density requirement. This is part of the Met Council's kind of chatter a little bit, is to move that into the two to three units per acre range. And so, when we came back with the comp plan, we're really planning to not make dramatic changes to the plat. It would still be sixty-five lots, but what we did do is take twenty, thirty feet off the rear of all of the lots to reduce the size of the lot so that, that we could increase the density. But when you reduced all the lots, we needed to increase the impervious by five percent. Same amount of impervious as the previous plan, but just we shrunk the lots, so the number went up. And so, again, it's sixty-five units, they're still seventy-foot wide, same setbacks, but now the density is two units per acre. And because we shrunk the lots, now the open space is almost sixty percent, or over sixty percent open space. So that, like, was what I was hoping to present tonight with, you know, great applause and, you know, you know, cheers, and we get moving, and we're ready to roll. But unfortunately, there was that sewer capacity issue, which I'm getting to. So, the benefits of this plan, it was the same as you approved, that it eliminated this concern about the failure of the septic system, and some of the neighbors didn't like it near their properties. So that kind of went away, saved sixty percent of the open space, provided a public trail and opens, you know, open space and trail system, and kind of had the best of both worlds. It allowed for some development, but also protected significant areas of open space. So that was the plan. I should have said then the cheering. But we, we get to the point where now, again, where I thought we were providing, you know, a lift station, there was going to be a forced main going down Inwood. There was a couple connection points that I had talked to the city about that would be worthwhile. And honestly, I thought that the study that was happening was figuring out where to connect. It was kind of news to me a month ago when we talked to staff, just when, when there was an issue about whether or not there's enough capacity to even support the, this. Because if you think about sixty-five units in the scope of a metropolitan, you know, municipal urban waste system, it's kind of a rounding error. It's not a lot of units in this, in the scope of units when you're talking about connection points generally. So, the, the possible next steps that I see, I mean, one is the, I, I, what current staff recommendation, you know, they're ask, they're saying, no action today, this is informational. You know, wait, wait and see how this plays out. We'll work with the Met Council, we'll have our engineering staff come up and see what kind of capacity we have. And I get that, but then I feel like there's really no urgency for the Met Council to make a decision. And, you know, here I am, into my third year with a purchase agreement. Al's at our heart's here tonight. I've been, you know, they've been the family, they've been very nice, giving me time to try to get this figured out. But I'm kind of running out of time. And I know that's, it isn't that you guys haven't worked hard. I mean, you approved a plat for me. We've tried to figure this out, but we're kind of in round three now of trying to, to figure this out. I, I was, to me, it seemed like you could approve the, my second option here, I think you could approve the comp plan amendment and send it to the Met Council and let them tell us if there's capacity or not. Now, if there's a restriction within the city, that, that would be, then maybe that's different. Like if the city engineer said, no, we don't have the capacity within the city to even get it to the Met Council system, I understand that. But if it's really what we're waiting for is an answer from the Met Council, I think the council could approve the comp plan amendment, send it to the Met Council, then they have sixty days to respond, or they could extend it to a hundred and twenty days. But then we'd know in four months what we could do. And where we are now, I'm already four months into a comp plan, and here I am on an informational session, and I don't even know if I have sewer or not. And so, I, it, pretty soon, I'm going to lose another construction season. So I'll be out of the third construction season on this project. And so I'm just trying to figure out a way that we can keep it going. But I'm not trying to be too aggressive, I'm just, but I'm trying to see if there's a way to get a, get something before the Met Council so we can find out about the capacity. Lastly, if we just think it's just too much work for the comp plan amendment, that's one way, or if we were waiting, willing to wait for the comp plan amendment and find out there isn't capacity, I'd like to just try to get some general direction on, is there a rural plan that we can move forward with? And I know I'm trying to, like, put a lot into the bucket here tonight, I get it, but I was just going to touch on those two plans. And again, their concepts, just like staff has invented it, we haven't done a full engineering on it. I think they're use, they're worthwhile plans. I think they both could work, but we haven't fully engineered, engineered them. The one that we prefer at this point is the eleven lot rural plan, just because of its simplicity. It's five-acre lots, minimum. The overall gross density is seven acres per lot, so it's point one-four units per acre. So it meets the current RSF code, which is point one, you know, goes from point one units all the way to two units per acre. There's no public infrastructure. So we were talking about private wells, using GAC treatment systems, just like the same treatment system that you use in your wells, private septic systems, twenty-foot private driveways. And the reason we weren't connecting it is we're just trying to make this really informal and simple and, and not, and, and at a cost that we can develop it and still sell it and, and make the lots work. I did have a call with the Department of Health yesterday, and I, and there is a Lake Elmo-Oakdale special well-boring construction area agreement, and it's probably something like what Mr. Holtz was talking about as far as the, it, it appears that even if we wanted to do private wells, there's a good chance that we couldn't. And so, you know, I guess we would have to come up with a way on this plan to see if we could afford to put city water in. And then I think we would open that discussion about PVC versus ductile iron. And I know there's policies and how that you create, you know, different types of systems in the city, but the, the neighborhood to the north and the neighborhood to the south both have plastic pipes in them. The main line plat, pipe coming up Inwood is a plastic pipe. So adding ductile iron into this hole in the donut here is actually putting in a different type of pipe, even though that's what the standard is, and that's what other neighborhoods have across the twi, across the area. But when you directionally drill pipe into a neighborhood after the fact, it's often plastic. it's often plastic. The thirty-lot plan is the same plan I showed you back in June. Minimum lot size acre and a half. That overall gross density, though, is two and a half acres per unit. Again, it meets the comp plan for the, for the RSF. And there's only, if you recall way back, there's only two properties that are guided RSF that are two, you know, twenty acres or greater, or even ten acres or greater. So these are just, there's really just two properties that are kind of in this unique situation that got us started with this. And, and so the flexi, this would be public water and a public road. Too bad you had the whole road discussion tonight, because we prefer rural, but I understand that, that there's been issues with rural roads over the time in these neighborhoods. And so I do think we could, just like Nathan mentioned in his staff report, you know, do the, the concrete ribbon curbs in, you know, still a rural road, but with a concrete ribbon curb. We would want some wetlands and ponding in lots to get this to work. That's really not any different than Torrey Pines or Lake Elmo Heights to the north. Again, PVC versus ductile iron, just to help take off some of that cost. There is some risk in this for us. I mean, as far as, again, we need to locate and test for the individual septic systems. I walked the site with the, and did a bunch of tests all across with a person who installed quite a bit of, quite a few systems in Torrey Pines and a few in Lake Elmo Heights, and they believe that there's adequate space to be able to accommodate these. But again, we have to locate them specifically. And, and, and even just the whole problem we've been having along the way here is that when we put all of these urban amenities and costs into a rural project, it just gets, there's not as much room to spread the cost. A lot of, you know, a lot of the times when you have a water and sewer project with city roads, you have three to four units per acre that you're actually able to spread the cost across. So that's the end of my presentation, so I wouldn't put you to sleep, I'm just, but again, the, kind of the options here is, you know, one, you know, you could go staff recommendation, wait and approve the comp plan amendment later. I would prefer that you think about approving the comp plan amendment now, to get the Met Council to provide us feedback specifically on the, on the capacity. And then, if you just don't like it, maybe we proceed with the rural plan now, or in the near future, and I wouldn't mind some guidance on which of those plans that you prefer. Thank you.
Can staff speak to this capacity issue that's being?
Yeah, so there's. So, that goes back to the sewer capacity analysis that I talked about. When we, you know, receive a request for someone to bring a property or project into the MUSO, we have to evaluate, is there capacity within the city's system, but also, what's the capacity look like downstream where the Met Council accepts the wastewater flows? So in this case, there's a specific area in the southwest corner of the city where there is a connection to the Met Council system. The engineering team is working diligently to try to figure out what the capacity of that area is. There was an improvement project that the Met Council had scheduled, and I believe is completing this year. But with that being said, the engineering team still has to understand, where does that project put us with respect to capacity in, in this area of the city, where certain projects and, and parts of the southwest corner of the city flow from a wastewater standpoint? So, the engineering team, you know, has heard some, I, I'll just call it like concerns about capacity with the flows, but I don't think that it's fair to say there's no capacity, or we can, we, we just can't provide a definitive statement on capacity right now. Certainly, it's concerning that we're not able to provide a, a, a definitive answer on capacity, but that's just where we're at, at this point in time. And, and I think what, you know, I think that's the reason that staff are saying, you know, at a minimum, no action tonight until we have a bit more information. We were prepared to have to recommend denial, just frankly, given the uncertainty, but I think it's appropriate to wait for, for more information.
How many connections do we have to the Met Council's infrastructure? Because we have one, obviously, there's the one over by Best Buy and Red Lobster. Red Lobster, that's the one I picked. Guitar Center, all that. Like, I, I assume that's the location of one of them where the, is it called Interceptor, or whatever? Do we have other ones then along? We have three?
I think there's three.
I believe there's three. I'm, I'm not exactly positive, but.
So there's, they're all, they're the, they're at the southern, they're on the southern border of the, of the city. There's, I think, three different interceptor locations, but I don't know.
I think it's like Lake Elmo, and then probably one down part by the bus terminal, I, I think.
Yeah, they're like almost equidistant as far as I know, but it, like, so the topography of that area of the community, most sewer is obviously gravity, right? So the flows are gonna come, be dependent on where the projects are located.
Do we have the same non-knowledge for those other two sites as well in terms of not our capacity for the lines going through, but necessarily at the interceptor location? Do we also lack that information as well for those two locations?
I think there's better information on, on those at this time. That's all being, you know, considered as part of the sewer review that's going on right now. So, a, all three of those locations are being reviewed for, you know, where they're at with the capacity.
And I, I recall this conversation a couple, couple months ago, but has the primary concern with, when there's wetlands on a property, has a primary issue been that it requires an easement? In case it's like an intentional stormwater location?
Oh, shifting gears to, to wetlands, so.
Yes.
Yeah, so from sewer to wetlands.
Completely shifting gears.
I can answer that one. So typically, in, in most development, we don't want to have wetlands located within the boundaries of a lot, primarily because they will come with special protections that are needed, including wetland buffers. From a code enforcement standpoint, long-term, that becomes a real challenge to prevent people from doing stuff in the wetlands and the buffers that are supposed to protect them.
And in this hypothetical, where that was mentioned, are these natural wetlands, or are these stormwater ponds that are necessary for impervious?
So there's six wetlands on the property. You can kind of see them a little bit on the screen here in the hatched areas. Some of them are larger than others. And so, if I can scroll back a little bit, you can see the wetlands a little bit better on, on this image, but typically, we don't want to see wetlands near, particularly near the, the home. Some folks, like in other, in other communities, I've seen developments that were approved where you had a walkout basement that you had, you know, ten feet to a buffer from the rear, rear of the home, and that becomes a real challenge, because people really start to want to mow that area. So, it can be a real challenge in some cases.
So these are stormwater?
Oh, what you're seeing in blue on the screen now would be stormwater ponding.
Okay.
Yep, and I just, to talk about that, so we've talked about wetlands on, on lots. Stormwater ponds, in a similar way, require city access to be maintained long-term in some cases. And so, when you have stormwater ponds located on private property, even though there's an easement, a platted easement, that gives the city the ability to access, that understanding is not always shared by property owners, and so when it does come time for the city to access the ponds, that can be a real challenge, just that we try to avoid through having ponds platted within our lots.
Thank you.
Really? You don't have any question? So as I understand it, it's not a city capacity issue, it's downline from wherever this zone would be in the sewer area, and from my understanding is, the Met Council hasn't done the, the modeling to see how much they can take, given the choke point that they've discovered in their system that receives Lake Elmo sanitary. And when they do find it, they have, they gotta do some modeling to figure out how large, to enlarge in that choke point area. And when they do that, they would still have to create a project. I'm thinking, that's gonna be into twenty-six, and the project's not gonna be until twenty-seven at the earliest, I would imagine. So, increased sewer capacity is likely not to happen before twenty-seven, probably moving in, you know, I mean, that's, everything goes well. Would that be a fair assessment?
I'd say that's an extremely aggressive schedule.
Right, right. If, if everything fell in right. So I mean, really, you're looking at twenty-eight, twenty-nine to be somewhat conservative.
So, first of all, again, city engineering staff have to confirm that, that this, that's exactly the situation, you know, where exactly is the capacity at, then if a project is needed, the timeline for said project would have to be figured out. So those are the two big pieces of information that I know engineering is, is working on.
And does approving a comp plan amendment now, does that speed that process up? Does that put pressure on Met Council? Not saying that that's the right thing to do, because again, obviously, then if it goes the opposite way, then we have to undo it.
Yeah, I think if you're looking at it from staff's perspective, it would, it would add an element that's over-complicating the situation, as opposed to waiting until we figure out where we're at.
So.
I don't, I don't think it would be helpful. I would not advise you. And in fact, yeah, it, with uncertainty in mind, staff were prepared to recommend denial of the, of the comp plan amendment, simply because we, we just didn't know where, where things sat with the sewer capacity issue.
Okay.
And now you want feedback for the other concepts.
If the council is inclined to provide feedback, it's not, and it's not obligated to, and again, this is advisory.
I'll, I'll say something on it.
Go for it.
So, it just as far as like, for options one and two, they're, I, the, it is frustrating, and yeah, you know, approving the comp plan would speed it up, I'd understand that, you know, how that seems like that could make sense. I think obviously there's downsides to that, so I, I do lean towards waiting. However, I also think a lot of, you've brought everything. We've been working on, you've been working on this for years, right? You've brought, you've tried to make it work however you could, and you've tried to, with the landowner, to, to make this something that could fit in Lake Elmo, and I know you guys have done a lot of iterations of this. And obviously, it has to work financially, but it also has to, you know, be within, within the standards. And so I, I know that that process has been done. So as far as for these other two options, I, I just, I do feel very open to, to looking at those. Again, I, I think a lot obviously has to be looked at, and there's probably certain portions of that, you know, for example, the, the curb on the roads, like, maybe that's a non-negotiable, but I do think that I personally would be open to looking at those exceptions. And again, I know we want to be careful of, we have our, our city standards, but in this situation, it's like, well, we've tried to meet the city standards, and it's not working for development on this site, so, you know, that's where we maybe do need to make an exception. We didn't go right to that step where we were looking for the exceptions right from step one. You exhausted all of those, and now we're in this spot. And that's where I, I'm open to looking at these exceptions and seeing how we can make that work. Again, not saying that, without that information, understanding the PVC versus the, the other, the PVC piping versus the iron piping, you know, I, I don't know how, I don't know the details of that, and obviously, I don't want to understand that better, but I personally, it, this, the eleven unit, I know the, I, I'm pretty confident that the neighboring residents, I think they would, would like this as well, just from the feedback that we've gotten from the others. So I think there'd be a, a lot of happy neighbors, just in regards to that. That's my feel. I just, I think I'd be open to looking at exceptions, not from the perspective of obviously changing our city standards, but just that we have tried to meet the city standards here, and it's not working. And so trying to make it work for the developer and the, the landowner.
Councilmember Holtz. I'm intrigued with the eleven parcel one for a couple of reasons. One, that is a, opportunity is not the right word, but that is a, a type of scenario that Lake Elmo has not created lately. Like, we have many fantastic five-to-ten-acre lots, but I can't recall a time in, in recent decades where there's been an opportunity for additional people to come in and enjoy that type of property. When they do sell, when they're up for sale in Lake Elmo, they go quickly, because those are very highly-wanted parcels. And so in that regard, I, we had the same discussion with the, the new type of zoning we created, that that was creating a, a type of opportunity that hasn't existed before. Fifty percent open space, a bit more dense, but, you know, trying to figure out ways to meet that demand from, and to align with Lake Elmo's expectations of preserving green space. I mean, I think there is a very strong discussion that when you're talking about eleven parcels over that amount of area, that that aligns with what we are consistently told by residents, that we value our green space. I mean, if they're private roads, they're, they're not city roads, so whether they are, well, in that scenario, in this hypothetical, is HOA roads? Is, I, if they ain't city roads?
There'd be private, there'd be a private driveway, basically, and there would, there'd be a shared, there'd be an easement, shared easement, that every person would have along that stretch. So they would, you know, come up with a way to maintain it. Wouldn't necessarily have to be an HOA, it would just be neighbors sharing a driveway, and there'd be an easement over the driveway, and there'd be, we've done these many times, and they're lengthy documents.
That was my next question.
I mean, there's, there's a lot of examples of where these haven't gone well, I'll just tell you. I mean, because the documents aren't done well, but you have to do a very explicit easement that describes how they're gonna be maintained, and, and how that's gonna, how the decisions are made about it, and that's what we do. But that's the idea.
Yeah, so that, that was my next question, was in terms of, doing this previously, we, we have instances in Lake Elmo of private roads over behind Wildflower on the insides. Some of those roads are, are private, but they have an HOA, and it's clearly defined as to how that works, the responsibility. So that, that would be a point I definitely would want to be doing some due diligence on.
We could put it in a small outlot and have it be in an HOA shared. And either way, we could probably make that work.
And I, in my previous comment about the five miles, so that's not regarding PFOS, that's regarding White Bear Lake. To my knowledge, the rules, no new wells can be drilled within five miles, thanks to Judge Marinin, but my high-level estimate on a GIS, I don't think any spot on this parcel is like five-point-oh-one, but obviously, that needs to be verified.
I mean, if we could do private wells, that'd be great. But I think there's also this Lake Elmo-Oakdale agreement?
It, it's a, essentially, it's, yes, there's a process. It's what caused a previous development twenty years ago to have to dig extremely deep wells. There's, it's a well advisory location. So yeah, there's due diligence that has to occur with that as well.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the previous ones with sewer are probably gonna happen, but I'd be willing to entertain, you know, another stab at it. I know you've been going at it a while, and I, I feel for you guys, but.
I mean, there's, there's a couple of points. Like, if, if capacity were truly, had been this, a big issue right off the ga, get-go, it seems like it would have shown up in the staff reports all along, not just now. I get that. You know, shit, stuff happens. We don't always know, we don't always have all the clear information. I get that. And so, but in order, I, to keep moving, I'm fine. I, I'd withdraw the comp plan amendment if I knew that I had some, you know, some legitimate support for the eleven-lot plan, and then I would just move forward with that. Because I mean, there's only, you know, I don't know, I'll make more times. I, I'm just really nervous about the idea of waiting for another study to somehow happen and come up with a capacity for this area. And I'm, I guess nervous that it's probably, it's gonna take a while, and I'm not sure what the outcome will be.
Yeah, I don't, I, like my previous assessment, I don't think waiting for the modeling and finding that and fixing that is within your timeline.
If, if there's a capacity issue. If, if there's a capacity issue, yes.
Yes.
You know, I, I go back to, when we, I think with this, this started, when we were looking at the OPPUD, it kinda brought up the discussion of, we had I think it was this one, where we said we have to re-look at how we created the OPPUD, it was, you know, created eighteen years ago, and it just, it wasn't structured in a way that was feasible for, for anybody to even use it anymore, and this is a development that, you know, residents of Lake Elmo would want, and, and have asked for, and maybe it's the same situation, right? He kinda mentioned it, where it's like, it's, it's really difficult to build rural units, uh, when we have so much urban, um, tape that goes along with it, uh, you, it is, it's difficult to make it work, and, and maybe that is something we have to reconsider of, just like we did for the OPPUD in this situation, I, I just, again, I guess I wanna be careful of what I say, but like, I just, I think I'd really love to see this work. And I think looking at what flexibility is needed to make it work is very reasonable.
Yeah, I don't wanna beat a dead horse here, but I really agree, I think this is a really unique opportunity for the city to stand out with eleven lots like this, I think it's really, really cool. I had one question about, and this is a very minor detail, I was honestly curious, but lot eleven, it looks like there's two driveways and five buildings.
So that's the existing home site?
Oh, got it, okay.
We are going to just preserve the existing home site and burn, you know, that, and some of those facilities, and so it's just, I don't think we're gonna get us an access directly on to Inwood, that would, that, we haven't worked that out with the county yet.
Yeah.
And so that's why there's that other driveway shown.
Got it, okay, thank you.
That it?
So before you fall too far in love with any concept, I'm just here to remind you we have homework to do, so, yes, staff are happy to do that homework, if, council.
I was gonna say, I sense unanimous approval, I don't know what you're gonna say.
We're not making any decisions here.
So just the direction for me, just going forward, so you, right now, we're, as it sits, we're waiting for the co- for the capacity to still play out. Meanwhile, I guess I'm gonna start working on a eleven lot plan to see if I can pull something together, or do you think it's just time for me to fish, you know, cut bait? Pull the comp plan amendment and come forward with a role plan? And I know, I know this is hard, I know we're kinda like in a work session sort of environment here, but trying to save us a little bit of time, maybe.
How you gonna phrase it? Well, I mean, I've heard from a couple of people, I mean, like I said, I, I would, I would, uh, I would look at the alternatives that you've presented here. The eleven lot would be interesting if you could make it work, but, um.
I, I feel like if, I, do, I know, you haven't really said much, so I'm kinda curious if, like, where you might stand on this.
Well, I think there should be a thousand lots and increase the density. No, I, I was, I would support the eleven lot alternative as well, I, I think, you know, they've pretty much said what I would've said, so
Okay.
in the interest of not repeating and beating a dead horse, I, I would support the eleven lot alternative.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Item number six, uh, Limerick Village EAW.
All right, so, um, you'll remember this development as well? All right, so we have, uh, two items related to this, this Limerick Village EAW that I'm hoping to discuss and get some action on tonight. Uh, the first is a resolution, uh, regarding the declaration on the EAW document and the need for EIS. The second is a findings of fact and conclusions, uh, and record of decisions document, so we'll talk about what that all means. Uh, of course, this is related to the Limerick Village Environmental Assessment Worksheet, or EAW, that was performed for that, uh, development. So, Limerick Village, you'll recall, uh, through a number of different concept plan reviews, um, here's the site plan that, uh, the developers landed on through all of the feedback that they had received from council and staff. Uh, this is a development that is a mix of different residential, um, uses that would be proposed, anywhere from single-family to attached townhomes, uh, and then, uh, apartment and, and senior, senior housing, so runs the gamut with a public park and open area in the center where the stormwater pond would be located, so that's just a little bit about that development. Given the number of units, a mandatory environmental assessment worksheet was required, and, uh, subsequently submitted, so what is environmental review just at a very high level? This is required through state, state law, the Minnesota Environmental Policy Act. Uh, this is an informational document that allows for public review and comment before, um, any approvals are, and permits are issued for a project. So, there's three different levels, and EAW is the, uh, I'll call it simplest level of review, followed by an EIS, which is a even more, um, sophisticated document, the environmental impact statement, and then AUARs are a little bit more regional in nature in terms of the review. Uh, there are thresholds for mandatory EAWs, the, the threshold in this situation with the residential use is, uh, two hundred and fifty unattached units or three hundred and seventy-five. This development exceeds both of those numbers, but is below the threshold for a mandatory EIS or environmental impact statement, so the, the flow chart on the right is not meant to be read by you, it's just that we have gone through a, a process that is required by state law for EAWs. The timeline for that process started in May, uh, of twenty twenty-five this year, and concluded with a, some, EAW submittal uh, from the developer that was determined complete in August of twenty twenty-five this year, so, uh, since August twenty-sixth, when the EAW is published in the EQB monitor, um, the, there was a thirty-day comment period that ended on September twenty-sixth, and then, uh, here we are tonight, making a decision on the need for EIS. I'll remind you that, um, during the public comment period, there was a, uh, notice of availability for the EAW sent to seventeen reviewing agencies. The city published five consecutive, uh, times in the city newspaper, providing public notice, in addition to having information on its website about the EAW and the access to it. So, in total, we received three comments, I'll talk about those. I have a list on the, on the page here, the agencies that received the, the notice for review were primarily, um, state-level or regional agencies. So, uh, what did we get back in terms of comments from all of those, um, seventeen agencies? We only received two letters from two different agencies, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency and the Metropolitan Council. We also did get a public comment from just a general member of the public, that's also, that comment is included in the findings of fact and record of decision document that's in front of the council. So, the comments from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency were, um, pretty, uh, s- s- simple or streamlined or straightforward, I could say, um, one was on noise. Another was on making sure that we had information, accurate information on wastewater. And then the Metropolitan Council determined the EAW to be sufficient from a regional standpoint, and provided some advisory comments. So, uh, what are the city's options here with this EAW? Uh, it's got two options, the, there is a negative declaration, um, the negative declaration would be that the city finds the Limerick Village EAW to be sufficient in the information that it provides, and would not require any additional information from the developer before they apply for their next step. Positive declaration would mean that, uh, the city finds there is a need for more information, and articulates that, um, that would be required, uh, that additional information would be required in the form of an EIS. Based on where we're at, uh, the information that was provided, uh, the EAW document is, is a pretty long document, I'm not sure if any of you have had the pleasure to look through that, but there's a lot of different, um, sections that provide good information on the project, so given that, given the fact that we, um, feel like all of the different comments have been addressed through the findings of fact document, staff are very comfortable, uh, recommending the, a negative declaration or determination on the need for an EIS. So that would be the resolution, uh, and then that resolution is supported by the findings of fact document that staff compiled, so with all of that said, I'm happy to stand for questions, the developer is here if you have any questions for him.
So the, um, the two responses from the agencies, just looking to make sure I gathered the overall sense of those, were items that they would bring into question or things to think about for almost any development that was going in, that, that's the feeling I got from that, is that?
I would, I would share, I would kinda share that sentiment in reviewing the letters in particular, so the, the Met Council's letter had a statement that said, you know, this document is complete from a regional standpoint, so they, you know, communicated to me that they felt satisfied with the level of information, and then there were just advisory comments from all of their different reviewers.
Right.
Like we're accustomed to seeing with comp plan amendments as well. And so those individual advisory comments were addressed directly with either comment noted, or if it felt like it could use a little bit more specificity, you know, that was responded to within the findings of fact document. And then, um, the, um, MPCA's letter had some, I, what felt like to me a little bit like canned language on noise, we get that language often from, county review memos as well, pretty similar language, um, not to say that we should dismiss it by any means, so we did really take a look at that, and felt like we got additional information from, uh, the developer's consultant that felt sufficient in addition to what staff uh, looked at with, with that letter, so that's why we feel comfortable with writing.
Councilmember Holtz?
In the comments from Met Council, I was reading through those, and they discuss various things, transportation, infrastructure aligned with twenty forty, they do not discuss any concern about sewer capacity. So I will presume that means that interceptor, they don't have concerns over?
That interceptor is captured at Lake Elmo Avenue.
So, this property is located within, it's already located in the MUSA, it's in the current development phase, so presumably, this is anticipated.
All right. Because of the fact that it is in the twenty forty, they presumably should be good to go and ready to accept anything that happens inside the twenty forty future zones.
Hopefully.
I'm gonna say he speaks for the Met Council, so.
Do not speak for the Met Council.
That would not be correct.
Well, that's been, that's, to hearken back to the capacity issue, that's part of the problem too, we have these properties that are already within the MUSA, that have been accounted for, and then you, you know, and by the way, this, this bottleneck that, um, we've been talking about, we don't know where that is exactly, we just know it's somewhere, it's not necessarily along Lake Elmo frontage of the interceptor, you know what I mean, so.
Could be Oakdale, could be Woodbury, could be.
St. Paul.
Wanna make a bet on where it's at? That's a question. All right, we can talk about it later.
They muted you.
They muted you evidently.
Enough Jeff.
Somebody shut off.
There we go. Now it's working. I got nothing else.
Anybody else? Questions, all right, I'll entertain a motion.
What's the correct number?
Yeah. Move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero seven-three, approving a negative declaration on the need for an environmental impact statement for the Limerick Village development project.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion. I don't know that, uh, you know, I've, I've read through these previously on projects, and really find anything that was surprising or that would fall out of favor with rel- relation to the project, and, and so I don't, I don't really see a reason to have a positive declaration, so I'm, I'll be planning on voting for the negative declaration.
Agree.
All right, so I'll call the question, everybody, all those in favor of adopting resolution twenty twenty-five dash, what was the?
Oh, just a ring.
I know you just moved.
Zero seven-three.
Zero seven-three, please signify by saying aye.
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 Uh, resolution's approved. Then we need a, uh.
Move to approve the findings of fact and conclusions document in support of a negative declaration for an EIS for Limerick Village Development Project as prepared by staff.
Support.
We have a motion and a second, um, don't feel this needs discussion. I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved, thank you, Mr. First, thank you, Marty. Mario, sorry, thank you. Next, we have quarterly goals update, Administrator Miller.
Thank you, it's always my pleasure to provide a quarterly update on where our staff are at with, um, you know, moving along with the city council's goals that were included in the strategic plan that was adopted in January, so we'll go through them pretty quickly, but, um, for, um, figuring out, um, what to do next with the seventy-seven acres, we did have that joint workshop with the Planning Commission and City Council, where, um, Community Development Director Jason Stoppa was able to provide um, a timeline, and then, um, next steps, so the planning will begin in the beginning of next year in twenty twenty-six. Um, while not identified as a specific short-term goal, um, it did align with our strategic goal of, um, building the vibrant, inclusive, and connected community through celebration, we were able to pull off the city-led one-hundredth anniversary celebration in September. Um, tomorrow, we'll begin our Urban Land Institute Technical Assistance Panel to work on the hundred and eighty acres. And then we will be able to, um, the final presentation will come back to council on the second medium of November, and we will also, um, be able to share that with the community as well. And then, um, for our fire station, our old fire station, we have the phase one of the EAW completed, and then phase two has started and should be wrapping up soon. And then, um, we also had the RFP committee that was able to score nine submissions for, um, the, what would, what will be in the old fire station and the old parks building, and so, um, the city council accepted the committee's recommendation, um, to proceed with, um, negotiations with tap and ladder and machete. For our old, um, city hall, we just recently, last week, had a workshop to discuss kinda the conditions, um, staff's, uh, parking concerns, and then kinda just explore options and pros and cons, so that will continue to have conversations about in the future. Uh, for our comprehensive financial strategy, um, probably over a month ago now, our finance director was able to put together a timeline, um, kind of for this, the discussions, and I included that in a Friday, Friday update to the council, so we'll, we'll continue along with that. Um, we did discuss our stormwater fees last month, and the direction that we received and that we're working on is reviewing the existing credits to see if they're still valid, and then, um, I will be bringing back, um, soon, can, uh, a quote from engineering to continue to look at the land use types and the fees, so that will be coming soon, just to get the, um, okay from you all to move forward with them. And then also staff has started discussing, um, just our, our current city water and sewer connection fees, and exploring where we go from here with that. We had, uh, the launch of our internal employee newsletter, and, um, city staff was able to submit ideas for the name, and it's, it's called The Loop, which was submitted by a firefighter, so we've been having that monthly, and it's full of lots of great information. Last month, we did have our Public Works, um, operational assessment come, come forward to the city council for acceptance, and, uh, Public Works Management is working on next steps for staffing. And recently, you all were able to see, um, the GIS mapping that we, we have that went live through Bolton and Mink, and so, um, just again, it's, it's pretty cool to check it out, we have, um, multiple different layers, including the parks and trails and water and sewer mains, um, current and future zoning as well, um, and then staff is. And then staff is working on GPSing differed infrastructure to include in additional layers for internal use. So recently, Public Works staff was able to map the existing irrigation system as well as new curb stops that have been installed in the last twelve months. And then finally, for the water treatment plant, there has been that right of entry agreement signed last month and that there is more work that will be done on the site once the growing season is finished, which I assume is pretty soon.
Harvest?
Yes. So that is that.
Question, on the, some of those new web applications, is there a way to kind of measure if those get used, do we count clicks or anything like that? Just curious, I'm not saying that we should, just.
We can look at analytics.
Yeah.
Our new website, we haven't really dove into that yet, but we have that accessible.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah, we can, we'll look into it and see.
Yeah. Councilmember Jasiic.
On the, on the utility of stormwater fees and the connection fees, I mean, I thought we were gonna develop a scope of services and define what we've wanted to be done with those and get proposals or something. As just right now, I don't know what we're going to look at, how we're going to evaluate it, what's the process we're going to use for connection fees, what do you use for stormwater fees? I mean, it's just, okay, we're gonna have Bolton and Mink do it. So what's the scope?
Oh, no, no, sorry, I should have been more clear. Just internally, staff have been meeting with engineering to kind of talk about what our next step should be. And so we, just trying to internally have more conversations about what those fees are used for and how we might compare to other cities and how development plays into it. And so we've just started having internal discussions.
That would all be part of a, of a utility rate study.
Well, then we can, so once we have that information collated, then we can determine what what we want to go beyond that, right? And then you could do a proposal to say, this is what we're looking for.
What I want to avoid is that we're spending money to do something that will be included in the proposal.
Oh, I don't think that's what she's talking about, but I could be wrong.
No, also, this ties into just our future strategic planning for finances. So just having our our finance director kind of see how that plays in. So these are just internal discussions. We we haven't gotten very far with that.
Is that all you got?
Yeah, that's it.
All right. We move into council reports. Councilmember Jasiic?
No report.
Councilmember Holtz?
Nothing.
Really? Wow.
I'm not gonna talk about my golf game.
So, so, well, a couple of things. So today I got to experience the, there was a chocolate cookie, chocolate chip cookie challenge here at City Hall staff had, so you know, I I made it a very important trip down here to make sure that I could help with the judging. And so my lunch consisted of some chocolate chip cookies. Well, when I came to do that, there was a box here that was addressed to me, even though it's it's really for the city, it's a the Honorable Betty McCollum, the Minnesota, in the House of Representatives representing our district of Minnesota, made a declaration for celebrating the hundredth anniversary of Lake Elmo. And she gave us a nice plaque, so we'll give that to the city administrator put it wherever it's appropriate to put it, I guess, but that was kind of cool that that she she took the time to do that and send us a little, little copy of that for the city, so. Looking forward to the Urban Land Institute stuff over the next couple of days, I think you mentioned that in a couple of different times, so. And moving forward on that hundred and eighty acres on the west side of town, so. Councilmember Hearn?
No report.
No report.
All right, staff reports, anything else? Administrator Miller?
Just if you have noticed that we're having our vertical pieces of wood that we've had refinished, so it's looking pretty nice on the city center. And then I will be attending ICMA Saturday through Wednesday.
All right.